To certainly share it and then you can each go on it.
Okay.
We have a person out there.
I mean, get rid of this. We have a personnel.
Share screen, I'm just gonna go here.
You can even know when you want to. I thought you were.
Nope, just share.
Yep.
Thank you.
It goes right over that line.
The government. Inflationary.
So she's gonna shoot her.
Of course.
I don't know. My daughter up for me.
Hi Lori.
That just fixed my.
We have Pete.
I even brought tea.
I know.
So prepared tonight.
This was my prepare.
A little wanky.
Why can't I grab quick?
I actually had.
For the special city council meeting, everybody has an agenda, there's a packet if you don't have your. Going to do a roll call. Right on my course.
Dana Berger. Lori Novak.
Jim Richards.
We have an agenda of three items. We'll entertain a motion for the approval. Do you have a second?
Second.
Yeah?
Yep.
Any comments? Pretty straightforward. All of the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Thanks, everybody, that's on the Zoom call. Appreciate you taking time to. Join us, so tonight we have a wastewater feasibility report by Joel Palin, our city engineer. We also have a proposal by Mike, Monty, who's our financial planner for the city. About his offering to help us with financial services. Talk about it again. So with that, I'd like to introduce Joel Palin, our city engineer that has been working with us. He has a presentation, it's. City council, so that's a wastewater feasibility, as you know.
Absolutely, so, good evening. Again, this is, I do have a presentation, we're working to get up here, but the presentation is essentially a summary of the feasibility report that was prepared for the city on the proposed wastewater system and associated water main improvements. And so that feasibility report was provided in draft form to the city council on December 10th, I believe. And so, the thought is, is that we would go through a presentation here that kind of summarizes the feasibility reports, and also kind of serves as a draft public hearing presentation, so I've prepared this really with the public in mind in terms of when we actually have the public hearing for the project, which at this point in time, we're scheduled to in February, present the final feasibility report to the council, and then at that point, we'd call for a public hearing, and so that public hearing would likely be at the end of March. And so, this is kind of a dry run or a draft presentation that I would give much the same presentation at that March meeting, and so, again, it summarizes the feasibility report, it gives us a mechanism to kind of talk about the information contained within the feasibility report. It allows the council to make any comments on it, if you do have comments about any of the policies or items included in the feasibility reports, you'd like to see something reworked or looked at differently, we have time to make modifications to the feasibility report, that'll be presented to you in February. And then, of course, we have essentially two months before we would have a public hearing on the same information. Make sense? So, obviously, typically when I do these presentations, we wait for questions till the end, but the public isn't really participating, it's just for the council's use, obviously, if you have questions, let me know, and with that, let's kind of get started. So why are we here? What's the point of the public hearing? Again, I'll kind of go through some of this stuff very quickly for the council's benefit and the benefit of moving to some of the more critical discussion items tonight, but really, public hearings for these improvement projects are to inform the public of the proposed improvements and the associated project costs, and lastly, the cost to be assessed to benefiting property owners. You know, and it is a public hearing, so we take testimony and public comment, and also try to address questions and concerns that we have. And lastly, we're fulfilling the obligation that we have under Minnesota statute 429, that's the statute chapter that deals with assess assessment of improvements to benefiting property owners. So, in conjunction with this, there will be a mail notice for the public hearing that we'll send out after the council approves the feasibility report and sets the date for the public hearing. But, I have kind of a handout that we would mail to everybody, and this handout is essentially a summary of the project. The critical pieces of information that we are required to and that people need to know. In addition to that, there is a frequently frequently asked questions document. And that frequently asked questions document, which I think all of you also have, is, I think, 26 questions. Questions that I'm used to being asked, questions that I think people should want the answers to. It focuses on the development and implementation of the project, it doesn't focus on construction issues, we're not construction yet. When we get to that point, there'll be another frequently asked questions document that we would fill out and provide to people. So these two documents, Ral and I were just talking, would probably be sent out, mailed out with the public notice. And again, that would go out after the council meeting in February, after the council sets the date for the public hearing. So what really, what we discuss in these presentations, you know, there's a little bit of information about the project need and background proposed utility and wastewater improvement scope, scope of the project and the associated details. Of course, we'll talk about the project cost and the cost sharing, how the project's being funded, and what the estimated fees are that would be assessed to the benefiting property owners, what the next steps of the project are moving forward, and then follow that up with question and answer for the public. Project history, most of you guys are familiar with this, but I think it's important to have in the or have in the presentation, because there's certainly some people that don't have a lot of background, why are we doing this? And so, this gives a little bit of information, the frequently asked questions document provides quite a bit more. And of course, if they want to dig into some of the reports and documents that are on the city's website, there's a ton of information out there. But as all of you know, Orinoco is the largest unsuited city in the state of Minnesota. Back in 2003, we had a community assessment report that kind of evaluated some of the subsurface treatment systems in downtown, and really kind of served as a baseline and a jumping off point to start to advance the project. 2015, we executed a memorandum of understanding with the MPCA in Homestead County. 2017, we got a half million dollars from the state bonding bill to do a regional wastewater study and alternatives analysis that was completed, and ultimately, that led us to look closer at you know, essentially, the options of regionalizing wastewater treatment with Rochester, going on our own, building our own facility, or regionalizing with Pine Island. 2018 came around, we got another two and a half million dollars in bonding from the state, and we use that information to develop a feasibility or facility plan, which went into further depth evaluating different options. And also allowed us to initiate, ultimately initiate the design of, design and permitting of the proposed facility. Which obviously, Orinoco ultimately looked at the different options and selected to construct a regional facility to serve the city of Orinoco as well as Orinoco State. 2019, 2020, we completed quite a bit of work in the form of environmental documentation, anti-degradation analysis, executed a regulatory certainty agreement, and ultimately, the MPCA issued the MPBS permit for the wastewater treatment facility for Orinoco. 2020 rolls around, and of course, that was filled with activities associated funding. The biggest one of those was receiving the 24 million dollars through the bonding bill in 2020, October of 2020, that that's allowing us to complete design and move forward with construction, and then there's also pieces of the puzzle associated with the points or supplementation grant and different loans through the state revolving fund that we call. And at this point in the process, we're nearing the completion of the design, initiating additional permit acquisition, easement acquisition, and other other topics. And again, we mentioned the summary document and the FAQ that we're prepared, and is great information for the folks. So, why is the project needed? You guys are familiar with this, Orinoco has a number of environmental environmental concerns, mostly associated with ecology and our groundwater and surface water. Again, public health and safety is a big, big concern, especially when you have non-compliant subsurface treatment systems. And then also, the water improvement provides domestic potable water and fire protection for the residents. And then supporting local growth, economic development is critical, having a municipal system, much like nearly every other city does, from which to build and grow from is important. And then, of course, there are folks with non-compliant systems that are in dire need of help. And this, the system would fulfill that need. Project scope. Our project improvement scope, there's really three elements of the overall project that we'll talk about. The wastewater system really is a combination of lateral sanitary sewer facilities. And we're kind of going from smallest to biggest, lateral ones are the small ones, the trunk ones, trunk sanitary sewer improvements are the larger pipes, larger conveyance facilities, and then, of course, all that goes to the wastewater treatment facility that treats the water and discharges it. Water distribution, much like the sanitary sewer, lateral water main improvements are the mall water main that serve individual properties, and the truck facilities are the ones that convey the larger amounts of water. And then, of course, we have impacts associated with construction, will disturb a lot of surface features, including streets and driveways and culverts, and all that stuff will be essentially reconstructed to match existing conditions. So starting with the lateral improvement, talk a little bit more specifics of what the project includes. And again, we'll kind of start with the lateral sewer and work from smallest to biggest in terms of pipe size and conveyance, and so the lateral sewer serves, starts with individual properties, and so, on private property, it's your homestead, and so from individual houses, there's really two types of sewer systems that we're looking at, one is a gravity sewer system, that's traditional system that you know, uses a four or six inch pipe to collect wastewater from the home, and it flows out to the the main, the second type is a low pressure sewer system, and so that is really a grinder station with a small diameter force main that wastewater is pumped through. We select which type of system would be utilized based or an individual home or area based on the area's topography, and so, yes, we're an area where we can have gravity sewer, and you don't have to be extremely deep, and there's not a lot, not a significant issue with bedrock or rolling terrain, then we would use that, but certainly in Orinoco, we've got areas where there is rolling terrain, and we do have large lots, and we do have shallow depth of bedrock. In those areas, we typically would use a low pressure system, and so again, that's that small diameter grinder station for that grinder station with small diameter pipe scenario. And then a little bit, yes?
That might be a really good place to just clarify for the public, when you're doing the public forum on this, that those in the newer subdivisions with the community subjects don't have to worry about that part, because that's something that if I was in, they may not make that distinction.
Okay. And then kind of working out from the individual homes, the individual service pipe discharge to lateral sewer that's in the streets. Typically, that's smaller gravity pipe, eight inch diameter with manholes, those types of things that people are used to seeing. And then, small diameter force main, anywhere from an inch and a half to four inch diameter, that again, extends onto the streets. The lateral sewer systems work together to kind of collect all the wastewater, convey it from individual homes and businesses to the trunk sewer system. Also should mention that lateral sewer project costs also include the abandonment of subsurface treatment systems or community waste treatment systems within some of the larger subdivisions, and also include locating, televising, and cleaning existing sewers within those, within those areas. So this is an illustration of some of the proposed lateral sewer improvements that that would be constructed in conjunction with the project. The next piece of infrastructure that we'll talk about a little bit is the trunk sanitary sewer system. And so again, this is the larger sewer pipe ranges in size from eight inch to 18 inch diameter, and it intercepts the lateral sewers and conveys it to pump stations. And in Orinoco, there's essentially five pump stations that are located and surrounding the community in the areas that we're trying to serve, and those pump stations intercept gravity flow and pipe and wastewater pumped to them through small diameter force mains, and they pump it to the larger central pump station. The central pump station is located in River Park. And that pump station takes all of Orinoco's wastewater and pumps it to the proposed wastewater treatment facility, and so that trunk force main is located along Minnesota Avenue or long, primarily along Minnesota Avenue or 40th Avenue Northwest. And so this is kind of an illustration of those individual pump stations, the central pump station is kind of located here, that's Orinoco Lift Station 1 and River Park, and then you can see there's a individual lift station in Garden Park, and then Cedar, or one in Irwood Hills, a couple in Cedar Woodlands, one and two, and then there's also a smaller one in, on the east side of River Park. And so, all of the wastewater again goes from the central locate, central pump station, gets pumped through the force main along Minnesota Avenue to the treatment facility. And that brings us to the treatment facility, as you saw in that last graphic, the treatment facility is located about quarter mile east of Trump High 52 and a half mile north of 85th Street. It's a mechanical wastewater treatment facility with an average wet weather design flow of about .638 million gallons per day. That is the treatment capacity that is projected to be required to treat all of Orinoco's wastewater, not only today, but over the next 20 years. The treatment facility is being planned and designed to serve both Orinoco and Orinoco State's mobile home community. It will be a state of the art treatment facility producing high quality effluent, effluent is essentially clean and disinfected wastewater that gets discharged back into the river. The effluent gets discharged into the middle fork of the Zomba River on the downstream side of Orinoco, just east of Cedar Woodlands. And the MPCA has issued an MPBS permit for Orinoco's wastewater treatment facility as of last December. And here's an illustration of that treatment facility, again, if you know where 40th Avenue Northwest is, that's the cul-de-sac kind of on the top of the illustration there, it's a gravel road at this point, and then, of course, down to the south is Orinoco State's, and to the west of the treatment facility is Trump High 52. And so it's a triangular piece of property encompassing about 10 acres, and you can see that Orinoco's existing pump station will get rerouted from where it currently goes, and Orinoco State's has wastewater treatment through these lagoons. And that force main will get rerouted and routed to the treatment facility for treatment. Here's just a little bit of a schematic of, not a schematic, an illustration of the site plan for the wastewater treatment facility. There's a number of buildings associated with the treatment facility and a number of tanks. That's kind of proposed in a fairly isolated area.
Riley?
Riley.
There's some, some people are saying they can't get in.
Can't open it up on here because she can't have two screens up.
Oh, really?
She should get another laptop.
Two of them.
I was gonna say, she can use mine if she wants a monitor.
Yes, we have problems. Okay.
Sorry.
So the so the existing, so that's, that, those three components really summarize the existing or the posed wastewater system, the existing water system is illustrated in this figure, and you can see that we have two wells, one in River Park, one in Riverwood Hills, and a ground storage, ground storage reservoir located up on the hill on the north side of town. Then on the blue lines are trunk and laterals, trunk and lateral water mains that convey and distribute that water main to all of the users, and of course, we've got a fairly big area in on the west side of Orinoco that's unserved, along with some areas immediately south of the river on the east side. The water main, much like the sanitary sewer system, consists of trunk and lateral components. The lateral components of the water main are really the individual services, the one to two inch diameter pipes that go from the mains in the street to the individual houses. And then there are smaller distribution mains that we still keep or count, include in the lateral water main, they are in the street. They're six to eight inch diameter, and they also include things like fire hydrants and valves and those components of the lateral water distribution system. The trunk water mains, those are the larger mains, typically eight to 12 inch, in Orinoco's case, they interconnect the existing municipal wells, the storage reservoirs, and the larger population centers, and of course, tie to the lateral ones. So in terms of the proposed water main improvements that are illustrated here, really what we're doing with the proposed water main improvements, anywhere that we're providing sanitary sewer service that doesn't currently have water service, those areas would also receive water service. So.
Sorry.
Just moved, Joe.
Sorry, Kathy texted and said there's somebody that wants to ask Joel Palin a question, can they do that or no? I'm sorry, object.
So if we could take questions at the end, that might be best, because a lot of the questions will be answered as we kind of go through, unless council has questions, that's my typical preference.
Okay, I'll let her know.
And so, here you have the proposed water system improvements, and again, they're being proposed in conjunction with the wastewater system. And so you might ask, well, if you're living in phase, or first, do I live in phase 1A, the phase that's initially proposed for service, and if I do, will I get sewer and/or water? And so this illustration really illustrates the areas that we're proposing to serve, the areas within the black boundaries, black line boundaries, and it is a little bit hard to see on here, but within those boundaries, all of the parcels that are generally shaded in yellow will be served, kind of a yellowish tan, and then the parcels that are shaded with this blue hatch, they would get water, and you'll also notice there are a number of parcels that have both a tan hatch and a blue hatch, and they would get both sewer and water. And this map is also included in the project hearing handout that we'll provide with, provide everybody, and of course, the council has a copy of this too, so it's a little easier to read when you have the PDF or a printed copy in front of you, it's a little more difficult when it's projected.
Just for clarity, Joe, the ones like, I want to say the blue and yellow stripe, I'm noticing some of these are fields or undeveloped parcels, am I to understand that they're just gonna have something stubbed to the property's corner?
Yeah. Because we did talk about providing service to, at least one service to undeveloped properties that are developed.
Yes, okay.
And so, talk a little bit more about who gets served and what they would get served with, so this figure and the next eight figures that we'll kind of look at are the same figures that are hanging on the wall. And they really illustrate the proposed areas to be served, and so in general, any parcel with a red dot on it is a single family house that gets served with sewer. Any parcel with a green dot on it is a non-residential parcel that would get served. Okay? The shading of the individual properties really kind of deals with land use, how they're currently used and zoned, and then you can also see within the property, you can see the green lines, for example, are the sanitary sewer gravity mains and the blue water main, so if we jump to you can get a sense. Jump to the next figure. 15 right over by which is the First Street Northwest and the West Center Street area. I think you'll notice that all of these parcels are getting served with both sewer and water. Parcels that are
Right, right.
Parcels that are being provided with water, who star on them?
You can hear me, the issue must have been, can't see, they're only seeing the camera view, they're not seeing your actual PowerPoint.
What are you sharing off of?
His computer.
Where, Joseph, are you logged in?
I guess I have my PowerPoint.
He's not talking to the city. That's why I said the camera should be pointed at the screen.
Yeah, because if he was logged in, he could just share. Just join the Zoom meeting.
Because I can see it there.
Is it that it's not presenting?
Yeah, it's not sharing. We can't see as an individual. We can see the council.
Because one of us could log in and share ours, our screen, and it would share with everybody.
That's what I was thinking.
Go for that.
That's what I was thinking.
You can do that.
If someone lets me in.
Do you want to take, I was just going to say, take your laptop with her, so.
Yeah, because I don't.
So then she can let you in and you can screen share?
No, I was taking them. A lot of people just Facebook Live. A lot of people, a lot of towns Facebook Live. There are things too, as like an alternative or an extra, like.
Well, I don't, I think it's, it's the sharing. She's trying to share from here, from his computer that's going into that Black House, then going into that controller. So she's trying to share the screen and it's not sharing. So I don't think it, whether it was on Zoom or Facebook or whatever, that has no capability of downloading things with that system.
Joe's computer plugged into the thing? Because I, when I ran P&amp;Z, I, I used my computer plugged into there, and I could show my PowerPoint. On the council, all you gotta do is submit over to full control of that computer.
You don't have to do that? I don't think she's going to have very good luck quickly, at least. If you want to do it, show me what you do.
Yeah, you better watch.
That's what I did for P&amp;Z, because I had to download PowerPoint. And you had the directions right now.
Uh, they have. It's a matter of learning the technology. And I personally know nothing about computers, so I'm out.
For modeling Ford. It's just beginning.
So that's what's showing. You hooked up most TV. For the call, I logged in on that computer. So Jill has logged in on that computer. Share your screen, and then what you're showing, you're projecting is the same thing. So that's what, that's what you have to do, and that would actually run the whole meeting off of that.
So I'm gonna have Zoom on my computer, is that what you guys are using? So I had no.
Yep, because then if you do that, and you hit share screen, you're in full control of meeting and.
So I don't have Zoom.
You'll have to download Zoom on to your.
That works, that works really easy.
Every, every week it's a change, and every week it's a different problem.
Yeah.
Unless you want to use Jim's laptop.
And I, so I think they're going to do that with Jim's for now. You good?
They can see it.
They can see it?
Yep.
Oh, good.
So we're ready to start?
Yep.
For restart? So we're not going to spend a lot of time looking through all of these figures. All of the figures are in the feasibility report that's been provided to the council. Will, of course, when the feasibility report is approved by the council, will make it available to the public, put on the city's website. But this is an illustration of Sewer District C. Really encompasses First Street Northwest, Ninth Avenue, and West Center Street. On this illustration, you can see the red dots indicate that there is 45 single-family homes in that area that'll be served. There are a couple multifamily homes over there that will be served. In addition to that, there are 54 parcels that will be served with water. The parcels being served by water are indicated by where those red stars are. And of course, all of these parcels in this area are being served with low-pressure sewer systems. And so that's illustrated on the figures by the black lines that extend from the individual. The red dots within the home, or red dots within the parcels are essentially over the existing homes. And so the, the slow-pressure systems extend from the home all the way to the, the road right away. And so really, that's what you have here. All the figures are set up similarly so that you can, you can have a sense of how this works and, and whether you're properly served or not, and how it will be served. Should also mention that there are a number of undeveloped lots within this, these areas. There, there are the white lots with the numbers in the boxes around them. So for example, this is parcel one. It appears there are a total of six undeveloped parcels within Sewer District C. Undeveloped parcels would receive one sewer service and one water service. Property owners of undeveloped parcels wish to have more than one. For example, this, this parcel owner might choose to have one from each, each, each of the adjacent streets. And then they can, they should go ahead and petition the city to request a second service. But all undeveloped parcels that are deemed developable would be served with one sewer and/or one water service. So flipping through these, this is District F, on the east side of 52, south of the river. This is River Park, Sewer District G, Riverwood Hills, subdivisions one through four. Again, all of these properties would be, would be served with some water. They, they are served with water, and they would be served with sanitary sewer and wastewater system, of course. Here's District Z. This district includes the Stokes Cove area as well as some parcels in Woodsview subdivisions. The parcels along Treetop, for example, just have a star. They would just be getting water service as well as the few parcels down on Forest Lane. With the exception of these two parcels where we have gravity sewer terminating, they both get sewer service. Everybody else just gets water in that area. And those parcels are being served with water as a function of the need to get water main to the Stokes Cove area. We have to go buy those, and so since we're going by those properties, it makes sense to serve them with water at this time as opposed to serving them in the future with Phase 1B. We're also serving Sewer District L, this is OrnoCo Crossing subdivision. And then Sewer District A, these parcels only get water service. As you can see from their blue stars. And again, this is similar to the Stokes Cove area. In order to get water main over to the Sewer District B area, the First Street and West Center Street areas, we need to get trunk water main to that area. And the Fifth Avenue Northwest corridor is a route that will be routing trunk water main down. And so since we're going down the roadway or the shoulder of the roadway with trunk water main, makes sense to serve the adjacent parcels with water main. And so that's what's being served. And so in this area, there's 10 parcels that would be provided with water service as indicated by the blue stars. So in total, you can see all of the areas in OrnoCo's ultimate service area within this figure. This figure illustrates how wastewater will ultimately be provided to all of OrnoCo, both developed and undeveloped. And so within the Phase, Phase 1 essentially is all the development that we anticipate will occur, all the existing development, plus the future development that'll occur within the next 20 years. And so the Phase 1A boundary, that's the yellow areas with the red crosshatch, those are the areas that are being served by the wastewater system. And again, this is just showing the wastewater system. The Phase 1B boundaries are just the yellow areas with no red crosshatch on them. So you can see that there's some fairly large areas, especially on the west side of town in these areas. These areas will be served with Phase 1B. That phase is essentially planned for construction in about, about 10 years. There's nothing magical about the 2030 date, but that's kind of the target date that we, we've been thinking about. And then the Phase 1C areas, these are the areas that we expect to develop over the next 20 years in conjunction with some infill development within Phase 1A and B. Certainly, there'll be some redevelopment, infill development in those areas. Phase 2, they're the, kind of the orangest areas. Out on the, mostly on the south side of town, but also some on the very north and east edges of town. And those areas are expected to develop beyond the next 20 years. And so that 20-year timeline is kind of truncated at 2023. And so we're expecting development at that point beyond 2023. So the proposed wastewater system improvements are sized and designed to serve all of Phase 1. So that's Phase 1A, 1B, and 1C. So what people, I always want to know is, well, how much is this going to cost? And so this is a complicated table that shows lots of great information that engineers like to talk about. But kind of the bottom line is, what are the project costs, the various elements of the project that we've talked about? And those project costs are circled here in red, in the red box. And so if you look at the various elements of the project, the wastewater treatment facility has a total project cost of about $20.7 million. OrnoCo Estates' share of that wastewater treatment facility is about $3 million. The trunk sewers cost about, just about $7.9 million. The lateral sewers cost about $7.3 million. And the water main improvements are about $2.5 million. Total project cost for all of these improvements is about $41.5 million. A couple of things that I would point out to folks, there is a, these project costs are based on a engineer's estimate that was completed, I think in August, this last August. And so on top of that cost estimate, we've included a 15% contingency factor to account for things like variability and bid costs and inflationary costs that we expect to occur between now and when we bid this. That number, that 15% contingency is a pretty big number. It's about $4.6 million. So bear in mind some of these costs for the project costs, we'll, we'll see them over and over on the subsequent slides. So we've got the project costs, now how are we going to pay for it? We have been working very hard on this. Working with our legislature. Most specifically Senator Sendham has been a great help advancing the project. In the 2018 and 2020 bonding bill, OrnoCo had some success in securing a total of about $26.3 million that can actually be applied to the project. We actually secured a little bit more than that, but that, some of those funds were used in the early study phases of the project and aren't available for funding project costs. I should also mention when I say project cost, project costs are construction costs plus engineering costs, plus property acquisition, easement acquisition, legal finance costs. They are what the project is expected to cost, and they do include a 15% contingency. So we had some success, as we've mentioned, with the bonding bill. That's a, that's a huge chunk of money towards this. In addition to that, we're in position to secure, or we have secured, and we're in position to secure a point source implementation grant through the MPCA. That grant has a maximum award of $7 million, which we qualify for. In addition to that, other project funding sources include OrnoCo Estates. They are a partner in this project. They currently have about 216 mobile home units. They're projecting about 100, 100 units in growth. So in total, they'll ultimately have about 316 units there. And they have interest in being part of the project and need to be served by that. Those units will generate about 11% of the total flow to the treatment facility. And so their project cost is about 11% of that. And so it is significant. In addition to that, we've qualified for state revolving loan funds to the clean water and drinking water revolving fund. Those loans are unique in that they are, they cover a 20- or 30-year term at the choice of the city, and their interest rate is very low. We've currently got a drinking water revolving loan in OrnoCo that is at 1% over 20 years. And we'd likely see that again. But typically, interest, interest rates are around 1%, especially now, but can go up to 3% in certain circumstances. So we've talked about the total estimated project cost. That's this line here, the top line in this chart. The total funding, that's what we just talked about. We've, we've kind of taken that funding and disseminated it amongst the various project elements. And we've come up with the local share. The local share is what the city of OrnoCo and its partner, OrnoCo Estates, needs to fund for the proposed sanitary sewer, wastewater system improvements, and the water distribution system improvements. So again, if you look at the bottom table, $41.5 million in project costs. We've secured about $33 million in grant funding. And so that leaves us at OrnoCo Estates with about $8 million to fund, and we would use the state revolving funds to do that. So we'd have a 20- or 30-year loan at that 1% to 3% interest rate to finance that. And then we would repay that. And so how do you repay the loan? Well, we would do that through fees that would be assessed to benefiting property owners. And we assess benefiting property owners' fees based on an equivalent residential unit. And so now we'll talk a little bit about what equivalent residential unit means. Equivalent residential unit is pretty much what you think it would be. It's one single-family home. One ERU in our case, for a single-family home. We're not making any judgments or comparisons. Each single-family home is one ERU regardless of the size of the property, the value of the property, or the amount of wastewater it generates. So it doesn't matter if it's a million-dollar home, or a $100,000 home, or if there's 10 occupants, or one. They're all the same in the eyes of this system. We also have some multifamily residential homes, and we anticipate more will develop. So those multifamily homes are things like apartments, twin homes. They could be mobile homes, tiny homes, any, any multifamily or smaller type of a dwelling unit. And so we count those as 0.08 equivalent residential units per parcel, or per unit. So for example, if we have an apartment unit, or an apartment with three units, three times 0.08 units is 2.4 equivalent residential units. The third category for considering what equivalent residential units are, are the non-residential and undeveloped parcels. And so for developed parcels that are non-residential, meaning they're commercial, light industrial, or institutional, it could be a church, it could be city hall. We base the number of equivalent residential units on their metered average monthly water use. Okay? And so for example, the typical resident should use about 5,000 gallons per month. And so we would take these facilities in this category. We would look at their flows, their measured water metered flows over three winter months. So maybe December, February, March, we would average those three flows, and we would divide that by 5,000 gallons. And so for example, if you're a light manufacturing parcel and you had 12,000 gallons on average used over those three winter months, we would divide 12,000 by 5,000, and you would be assessed three, 2.4 equivalent residential units. Now, a couple
Why winter months watering?
Yeah, people water lawns and stuff like that. And all of, all of those, all of that water is, goes through the meter. And so rather than having to try to account or place a factor on who is irrigating and who's not, for example, or watering a garden, or, or whatnot, we use the winter months.
So, but this is for non-residential?
Yes.
And my first thought is someone puts a car wash in, and people generally wash their car a lot in the summer and very little in the winter? Is that, I mean, is there a fair calculation?
Well, that is what is typical. And I do, within the feasibility report, include a little bit different or additional information in that. You know, we're going to look at water usage and make a determination, if that's an accurate way to calculate it. For example, if you're, have a business and you shut down in the winter, we're not going to take your winter month flow. We're going to take your summer month flow, or, or some reasonable combination of months to calculate a value. And there are some of those, in fact.
Yeah, that's why I asked.
So, you know, there's exceptions to cases, and, and we would leave that at, at the discretion of city staff to make, make a recommendation and determination. Minimum ERU for all parcels, whether it's residential or non-residential, is one. Nobody's less than one, regardless of your water use, regardless of your property value, regardless of your size. Another important note, especially for non-residential properties, the ERU calculation, when we assess a fee to that, we only assess the lateral fee associated with the number of ERUs for these types of parcels for the first ERU. Above and beyond that, we don't assess that. And that'll make a little bit more sense once we get into the fee structure and start thinking that through, and it's something worth noting. A little bit more about equivalent residential units and some special cases. We have multi-use developed parcels in that. We have some parcels, there are one parcel, they might have a house on it, they might have a business on it. They, well, they might have both a house and a business, or they have two, two separate businesses. While we do come at them a little bit different, differently, if they have residential unit and a business unit, or two business units, while we, we, we assume them to be two equivalent residential units. Undeveloped residential or commercial properties, properties that are planted, they're going to be considered one ERU. If they're not developed, but they are deemed developed, deemed to be developable, they'd be considered one equivalent residential unit. Parcels without direct access to an existing street or alley. So if they're kind of, they're an individual parcel, they have their own PID, they are developable, but you can't access them because, because there is not a road built to them or adjacent to them. Well, then we're not going to consider them developable, and they wouldn't be served with sewer and water until which time a road gets extended, and they do indeed develop. So they're excluded. And then we should also mention that larger parcels that are partially developed, but only have one unit built on it. So for example, if Jim owns a three-acre lot, and he's got one house, and his lot works out that he's got lots of developable area, and he could, if, if he wanted to at some point in the future, subdivide and, and maybe have two or three lots that he could parcel off and, and develop. Well, we're going to consider that type of lot one unit. But we're going to give that property owner the option of approaching the city and saying, you know, I'd really like to have the option of subdividing my lot and, and, and and, you know, developing another house or what have you there, and I'd like another service. Well, that's fine. We're going to allow you to do that. We're going to ask that you petition the city to be included in the project for a second sewer and/or water service. And that, you know, would be a second equivalent residential unit that you'd assess. But you do have that option. You have to submit that request to the city by the end of March in order for us to effectively add you to the project. So we've been talking about equivalent residential units. The wastewater fees to be assessed to benefiting properties are based upon equivalent residential units calculated for a given parcel. And so in the phases that we've talked about, there's 510 equivalent residential units in phase one A. So for clarification, there's actually 494 parcels, but 510 equivalent residential units. So why is that? Well, some parcels, like Tilly's, has more than one equivalent residential unit because they use a lot of water, right? And so that, that kind of plays out and impacts the, the service that they get. They, they should be counted as more than one equivalent residential unit. Now, phase one B, there's 226 estimated equivalent residential units. They're all, mostly all developed, and would be that phase in approximately 2030. And then phase one C, that's everything else over the next 20 years that we'd expect to develop, and that's 1,070 equivalent residential units. And so if you add all those up, you get 806 equivalent residential units. Also notably absent from the equivalent residential unit cost is Orinoco Estates. That's because we split their cost based on the amount of flow going to, or being produced from them, since they're essentially one parcel owner with lots of units. We split their flow, or we, we have a cost split based on the projected flow, not on equivalent residential units. But they will have 173 equivalent residential units we're projecting, and that is impactful when we start to look at utility rates. Because they will pay utility rates for each residential unit. So this slide talks about the estimated wastewater system fees. So these costs should be familiar. You've seen them in the past slides. These are the estimated project costs for the various elements of the project. So you see the wastewater treatment facility. This is the project cost minus the grant dollars. So there's about $4 million, $4 million that's split amongst 1,806 equivalent residential units. That's the total phase one equivalent residential units. And so why do we, why do we use 1,806 equivalent residential units? Because everybody benefits from the treatment facility. Everybody's wastewater, whether you develop today or will develop in the future, all of that wastewater is going to that treatment facility, and everybody has a proportion of cost of that. Similarly, for the trunk sewer, there's about $1.5 million that gets divided amongst the 1,806 equivalent residential units. And again, that trunk sewer conveys all of the wastewater from Orinoco to the treatment facility. And so you can see that $1.5 million divided by the $1,806 is $850. The lateral sewer, that's the last element of this, there's about $1.4 million in unfunded costs. That's part of the local share. We divide that by the 800, or, I'm sorry, the 494 parcels that were being served. Not the equivalent residential units, but the parcels. And this is for the lateral sewer, not only coming out of your house, but the smaller pipes in the streets that feed to the lateral sewer. And it also includes things like abandoning the community waste treatment systems in some of the larger subdivisions, the cleaning and televising the existing sanitary sewer system. Those costs are all built into that number. And so if you add those three fees up.
Why, why is it that you didn't use the 1,806 for that number?
Because the lateral sewer only benefits the people that directly connect to it.
But doesn't, but you just said that it's paying for
So the, the
Other
Yeah, so the people in phase one B don't benefit from the lateral sewer that goes from your house and conveys your wastewater to the trunk sewer. They'll pay for their own when they do that, just like when a developer comes in.
I, I was, but didn't you say that there were other costs in that lateral sewer?
Only the abandonment of the community waste treatment system and thus the cleaning and televising of the existing lateral sewer that brings the water to the trunk sewer. And so the combination of those three things, the plant investment fee, $2,240, plus the trunk sewer charge, the sack, $850, plus lateral sewer connection charge, the $2,870, all add up to $5,960. So that's the estimated assessment for one equivalent residential unit. Okay? And so what is that on a monthly basis? If we look at a 20-year term, and we look at a 2% interest rate, it equates to about $30.34 a month over 20 years. And of course, we haven't made the decision as to whether it's going to be a 20- or 30-year loan. We don't know what the interest rate is yet, but that, I think, is a pretty good guess. And I should also note that, you know, all of these costs will be recalculated once we go through the construction process. They're not, these costs are based on estimates. The estimates are usually pretty good, usually within 15%. A lot of times closer than that, and it can, you know, it can be up. It could be to the benefit of the project. We talked about the fact that we have a $4.5 million contingency. The bidding climate frankly is very difficult to predict with all that's going on, with all that's going on in the world. So we'll, we'll see, but that is, that is the projection at this point. And, and I think we've got a fairly conservative estimate. The water system. Wow, the water system is calculated the same way. We have a fairly heavily subsidized project in, in the form of the costs that have been provided through grant and state bonding funds. But we do have a lateral connection charge, and we have about $0.6 million to finance. When we did this cost estimate and the ERU count, we based it on a feasibility report that was put together in May of 2019, some council probably remember that. Then, at that point in time, there was 97 ERUs. As we kind of looked at the project and worked through the sewer and water committee and the council, one thing that's changed from then to now is we decided that undeveloped parcels would be served by the project. And this, this decision was made for the sanitary sewer. If we're digging by these undeveloped properties, it makes sense to provide them a service, and they get benefits, so they get assessed an ERU. While the same logic applies to the, the water distribution system. And so we've applied that similar thought process. And so we have a projected assessment of about $6,150 per equivalent residential unit. We've added some undeveloped lots, which come with a cost, but that cost essentially offsets the assessment. And so the assessment included, the assessment calculation included within the these calculations or this table is still legitimate. It still makes sense, it still works out. We just haven't went through and modified everything that would have to be, given the fact that it's all based on an estimate anyway.
And these fees, Joe, if, if a resident decides, hey, I don't want to pay the $30, $31 a month, I want to just pay it upfront?
Yep.
They can do that.
So yes, I, I don't give a lot of information on that. To answer your question is, yes, when we get to the assessment hearing, they'll, they'll be, everybody will be sent a notice, and that gives all of the options for payment. So people have the option to prepay with no interest, partial prepay with interest following, or just to ride it out and pay it. You, of course, have the option of paying off the total assessment when you want to. Oftentimes, when properties are sold, the assessments get paid.
Sure.
And so that, that money comes back into the city.
So one other question I would have too. So when we're talking water, so as we hook people up, there's a lot of existing wells out there. I know Pine Island allowed people to keep their well for outside water, for watering lawns and things like that. Are we going to allow?
So we, yeah, Pine Island cities don't have jurisdiction over wells. Homestead County has jurisdiction over wells. Homestead County is unique. They're one of the few counties in the state that the health department has granted them jurisdiction. So county ordinance really dictates whether you can have a well or you can't have a well. And there are some fairly prescriptive requirements. So to answer your question is, yeah, you can have a well to water your plants, but you have to permit for that well. And so frankly, the cost to, well, assuming that the well is cased and meets certain requirements, we'll send out information to property owners when we get to that point
Sure.
about what the requirements are, and if you can, and can't. But kind of the bottom line is, you can have it, but you have to have a permit for it. And the permit for it is fairly expensive, probably costs more to permit the well than to buy the water. But that's up to the property owner. But what we really, we really do want to eliminate wells because they're a source of potential contamination for everybody's groundwater here. We want to make sure that the wells are compliant and cased and up to We want to make sure that the wells are compliant and cased and up to date and, and a lot of them frankly aren't. So kind of summarize what we've talked about here a little bit. The Phase One A, property owners would be assessed about $3.6 million. Orinoco State's portion of the Phase One A improvements is just under 0.6 million dollars. So in total, about $4.2 million of the total project cost, which is nearly $42 million, or about 10% would be assessed to the benefiting property owners. The Phase One B and One C property owners would be charged about $4 million in projected plant investment fees and SAC fees. That equate to about, you know, the other half of the $8 million local share, if you will. And that, that money ultimately comes back in and, and can be used to either fund debt service or fund future improvements. Depending on when it happens. And then I also kind of mentioned that, you know, the Phase One B areas as well as the Phase One C areas, the, the property owners would be required to fund the cost of lateral improvements, just like they are in Phase One A and they'd be assessed for them most likely because they'd be done in conjunction with a public project. Under Phase One C, that's developments. Typically, there's a development agreement. Part of the development agreement is if you want to develop in Orinoco, you're going to put in all the lateral sewer. Then you're also going to pay the fees to be granted the ability to connect to the trunk sewer system and the wastewater system. And here's your proportionate share of those costs. And so that's usually done on a, on a per acre basis. We'll take the equivalent residential unit costs and fees rate structure and convert that to an acre basis and, and that's what the developer will. And so in total, that 8.159 million dollar fee revenue would be generated to repay the local share through the proposed Phase One A improvements and the future Phase One B and C improvements. And the city of course has the ability, if necessary, to subsidize that through utility rates as well as generate tax levy if, if the need arises. So public engagement and moving forward. We would tentatively plan to have a public open house. I put in here March 23rd, but that's a date that needs to be set by the council at the February meeting. At the February meeting, you'll be asked by resolution to approve the facility plan and set the date for the public hearing. At that point, we'll prepare a mail notice that gets sent to everybody that's in Phase One A. That talks about the project a little bit and invites them to the public hearing. And then we would also include the five-page project summary with that little map and the 10-page frequently asked questions document to have people ask questions. So all of that information would be mailed to the property owners. And then of course, we'll have information on the city's website, which we currently do under the community heading, under the wastewater project tab. There's existing presentations and reports and project documents. We'll put the frequently asked questions and the project summary out there, probably after the February meeting, after the council actually approves the feasibility report. And then kind of go from there. We're, we're trying to be proactive in this environment and try to get information out to people. We normally wouldn't mail all this stuff out. We hand it out at the meeting. We recognize that we can only accommodate so many people here. It's best if people have the information and the information is accurate. So I've kind of talked about the schedule. Here it is again, the public hearing in March. The day after the public hearing, I'd probably have an open house event here. Where I'd be here, city staff would probably be here. We'll have the big maps from the feasibility report, much just like those printed out. We'll have the handouts. People can come in and visit, ask questions of me or city staff or council if you wish to be here and, and, and try to disseminate information and address questions and concerns at that point too. Kind of back to the big picture, over the next months, from March to July, we'll be completing the design process, developing the bidding documents, working with MPCA on their approvals, securing permits. And then there's also that easement acquisition phase that the council authorized last month. And so that would get us to the bidding phase. So we're tentatively planning to bid the project in August. After we bid the project, we would probably have another public open house event. Hopefully COVID's behind us by then, or at least mostly behind us, but we'll see. So at that point, hopefully we'd know the contractor and we would start to develop, or we would have developed and start to send out more detailed information about, you know, how do I get my mail? You know, what happens on garbage day? Will my street be impacted? Are you going to impact the day lilies around my mailbox? You know, those types of questions people are going to ask along with lots of questions about the low pressure systems and how that system all kind of has to come together. And so we'll be disseminating more information moving forward. Execute the contracts and begin construction sometime this fall. Substantial completion about two years later. And so in October of 2023, we'd have the project costs. We'd have really the has-been bit costs or as-built costs at that point. We go through, revise the calculations, mail out notices, tell people what their assessments would be, have another one of these public hearing type meetings, present all the information. People will have the ability to object to their assessment for the proposed fees at that point in time if they chose to. There's a process, process that we kind of lay out at that point in time. But ultimately, the assessment role would be certified by January and the first payment for the proposed project would be on the, when, when the first taxes are due, I think that's May 15th of a given year. So it'd be May 15th of 2024. It sounds like a long ways away, but I guess it's not. That is what we have. And we're at the point where we're taking questions and. I do have a couple more slides. They deal with the utility rates in anticipation. That's one of the things people would ask about. This is nothing new. This is in the feasibility report and we kind of talked about it. The water utility rate. We're getting some feedback from Mike Mubadi on that, but the current projection's about $20, $20 for the, per ERU for the, the base fee plus $5 per thousand gallons of water treated. And so, you know, if you're using 5,000 gallons a month, your bill would be about $45. If you're using $3,000 for 3,000 gallons a month, your bill would be about $35. And then of course, utility rates increase 2, 3, 4, up to 5% in some cities in some years. And that would be at the discretion of the council based on inflation factors and, and how healthy your utility is or isn't. This is an illustration of what the water rates currently are. It's $18.28 base charge, plus there's a wealth fee of $5 and a state surcharge of 81 cents per ERU. And then you add on the cost per thousand gallons for, for the various different criteria. For a single-family residential using 3,000 gallons a month, cost might be about $33.7. So I'm hoping to go through that presentation for the public in the future, a bit faster than we did tonight. We'll have to kind of work out some of the logistics, but hopefully that, that can, that can work out. Questions of, well, specifically about the presentation or maybe even more importantly, the feasibility report, which is, has all the same information, it's just in more detail. Because I do want to bring that feasibility report back to the city council for your consideration at the February.
16.
16th meeting? Did I have that wrong? I do also have a very detailed project schedule that I, I did provide. It is the 16th on here. And this kind of goes through, there are publication requirements and mailing requirements and all kinds of information about what needs to be included on those. So Gerald, Geraldine and I will work on that together and we'll consult Mr. Flaherty as needed.
So I have a question. Could you just go over again why in Zone Z and Zone, or District A and Z, we are putting water but no sewer?
So when we've worked on this with the Sewer and Water Committee and council over the past, we've identified Sewer District C, which is right over there. That's figure 15 by, by Jim there. That's one area that we've got smaller lots with some compliance issues that we targeted as a need to serve that area. And so we have to get water main over there. And so if you look at this figure, there's only so many ways that we can kind of get water, water main over there. And so the prescribed route is along Fifth Avenue, or I'm sorry, Fifth Street Northwest. We'll go along the shoulder of that roadway and then we'll cut down through the lake bed underneath the river and under 52. And so since that's the route to get water main there, we need to, we may as well serve the, the people that we go by. And so that's why this, the, the parcels in Sewer District A along Fifth Street would be getting only water. We don't have a need to have sanitary sewer up there. We don't have sanitary sewer mains proposed in that area. And so those are the two unique areas. The other one is the Stokes Cove area and that was the other targeted area. And so we looked at some different water main alignments as part of the feasibility report. One of the alignments is along the front of the road. The other one was essentially down Forest Lane and Tree Tops Lane, those two cul-de-sacs that you can see. I guess I can use my call cursor right here. So it'll be directional drilling underneath the road and then between the cul-de-sacs, that water main. And that water main ultimately gets out to the Stokes Cove area. And so as we go by all these properties, they would be served with water, but not sewer.
Well, these two at the end have sewer though?
They do. And the reason for that. Here it is. So the reason for that, if you can see my cursor here, this is lateral sewer. And so the lateral sewer comes up along Memorial Park and then ultimately discharges to 12th Street, but then it runs along the north side of Memorial Park and it stops at this corner. And so this is gravity sewer and we need gravity sewer there to service Phillies and the RV park. They're really big water users. We don't want to pump their water. And so that low pressure force main from Stokes Cove is this pink line. And that goes down the property line and it terminates right here in the gravity sewer. But since we have gravity sewer here, we, we're going to pick up these two lots.
You can't pick up the, the third one where the?
This would be served Phillies, but these wouldn't be. We'd have to put in grinder stations and.
Because it's coming, the water is coming from there, but not the sewer.
Right. Right, if that makes sense.
And you don't want to put grinder stations to those houses because?
We could. It just makes the project bigger. They're large, relatively large lots with no compliance issues that we know of. So we thought we'd push them off to a subsequent phase.
Go to District A. The one right before that. You'll see it picks up near the two and then upper right-hand corner on the 12th Avenue.
Yeah. And that's because there's trunks, there's trunk sewer going down 12th Street that intercepts the force main from.
And will that be explained to people? Because people are going to be confused why a neighbor got it, but they didn't.
We can. It's always a question of how much information we want to.
Right. I don't know if it's, yeah, I don't know if it's something you give to everybody, but in those certain cases, would that be smart to do? Because you can probably explain it better than I can.
Yeah. And I can certainly do that to some extent. There's so many specialty cases that, you know, people, I'm hoping people will either pull up the feasibility report and look at the figures. Because I do think that they're somewhat intuitive in terms of how they're laid out, but also to come in during the public open house the next day and ask questions.
Any other questions from council? Do you have any questions from the Zoom now? Call in.
I will text her.
So I will say just in regards to the feasibility report, there are some things that I, I've got a little list of things that I want to update. I'll just tell you what I'm going to update. So it's, none of it should be a surprise, but I'm going to incorporate this more detailed schedule into the documents since I have it. I'm going to update Table 11 to match more of what's in the summary. Frankly, there was an error in Table 11 that needs to be corrected. I'm going to add this figure 13A. That's this figure that we included in the handout. I think it's necessary to understand who, who is getting served and with what. Minor typos, things that I've noticed. And then I'm also going to add the feasibility report for the water system that we completed in March or in May of 2019 as an appendix, just so that everything's in one spot.
Joe, Kathy just texted me and said, Brian Todd has a question and he wants to know what happens to all the old septic systems? Does the city remove them or leave them in place?
So the old systems, in fact, if you look at the frequently asked document, or the frequently asked question document, this, the answer that's in here. But the answer really is complicated by how is it served? If this, if the parcel's being served by the low pressure system, the low pressure system is the grinder station with the small diameter force main. The state allows us to use state funding, assuming that the property owner grants an easement. We go in and we install that grinder station. We connect it to the house. We extend the force main to the street. As part of that, typically the septic tank, it's disturbed. And so as a rule on those parcels, we'll pump the tank, we'll abandon the tank in place. And then we'll pull cleanouts and things like that for the drainage field. And so we'll abandon that system. Now, systems or parcels that have a gravity sewer service, the gravity sewer service stops at the property line or just short of the property line. And so the state won't let us continue that gravity sewer system onto the private property using their funding. So the property owner has to get a plumber to complete that extension of the gravity sewer. Okay? And in conjunction with that, they are required to abandon their septic as part of that. So there are some trade-offs. If you get a gravity system, well, If you get a gravity system, well, you have a gravity system. There's some benefits to that, but you have to complete the installation yourself, you have to fund that component yourself, and you have to abandon your septic. If you get a low pressure system, well, all of your sewage gets pumped. You get to pay the electric bill for the grinder station. The grinder station requires maintenance. The city will maintain that system. That's one of the reasons that the state will, that is the reason, that is a requirement of the state's funding there. The state's not going to put money into something that has to, that's not going to be maintained by the state.
So Joe, do you know what typical monthly charges are for those people that would have to have a grinder station from other systems installed? Any idea what people would be looking at for...
Electric?
For electric or something like that?
There's some good information on the individual sites. For example, I go on the E1 site and you can learn lots of it. I think it's equivalent to running a, what did it say, like a 60-watt light bulb per month? So it's not...
Okay.
It does take a 60-amp service. They cycle on and off and they're fairly efficient. There's a wet well within the grinder station that, you know, pools and so they can cycle on.
30-amp.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 30-amp service. So it's a little bigger service.
So does that require, just for anyone that's online, does that require a box out there where the access is? Is that something in the house?
So, yeah, there is a need. Some people might not have a 30-amp service left in their box.
Right.
Right? Their box might be all, you know, full, full of all their circuits. And so they might have to add on to that. And then they would extend that electric service out to a receptacle located outside in the vicinity of where the treatment, where the pump station's going to go. So the contractor can make that connection. We can bury it, we can do those types of things, but work inside the house isn't something that we want to be doing as part of a city project. And so the property owner in that instance is asked to pay for that, and they pay the electric bill, but they, after that, they're pretty much done.
So what I'm hearing you say is you could have something out in the yard, or it just could be wired into your box in the house?
Right, but it's got to be a 30-amp service that can run the...
I don't think they want to...
And metered to the house, I'm assuming.
Right.
I don't think that you'd want a second meter or anything like that.
No.
Just the one meter.
Right.
Joe, could you comment on what you mean by abandoning the septic system?
So abandoning the septic system, now there is a county, Olmsted County permit that we would have to comply with, but typically it means pumping the tank. And then we take the cover off the tank, crush the tank, fill the void with sand and topsoil. And then if there's a drain field with clean outs, we'll cut off the clean outs, dig down and cut off the clean outs. You know, we won't be chasing drain field piper, digging up mound systems or doing those types of things. That stuff gets abandoned in place. It's just, if it's at the surface, we get rid of it, the tank gets abandoned, essentially remove the waste and collapse the tank.
So for the private individual septic system that have a gravity system, do they need a permit to take, remove the system as well and document it and how they abandon that system?
So they would have to get a, same way, they would have to have their contractor, whoever would come in to install the gravity sewer service, the four-inch diameter or six-inch diameter pipe would likely do that. So, you know, it's not an egregiously expensive thing. You have to have somebody come in and pump the tank and usually with an excavator and they can pull the top slab off a tank and/or collapse a tank as necessary and then fill the void with sand.
Is it hazardous? They want to know to what you just said.
You would want a licensed contractor doing it, and yes, the wastewater is hazardous. I mean, it has to be disposed of by a licensed, you know, a go-for-septic type of a contractor or a licensed contractor that has the expertise and equipment to do that. It's not a con, it's not anybody that's going to do it.
Right. Is there a timeframe when that needs to happen?
So that's something to be determined, but also something that's addressed in the frequently asked questions. My recommendation to the council is that when we develop the ordinance for the wastewater system, we have a timeline in there that says, you know, you will complete your connection within 12 to 18 months of it being provided, and frankly, the sooner the better. The connection's mandatory. The rationale, it's really the expectation or the requirement of the state, they're giving us $33 million, their expectation is to make this investment, people connect. And the sooner they connect, the sooner they start paying their utility bill, the better off, frankly, the utilities.
The system needs to support itself, and the more people that are on the system, the more it supports itself.
Right. I was talking more of the abandonment of those, of their current septic.
Yeah, a lot. That usually will get done at once. It'll usually get done with this, you know, with the exception of having somebody come in, the utility contractor will abandon it. A lot of times, in order to get the sewer to the house, you'll dig right through the drain field or, you know, it just doesn't work out that they'd be mutually exclusive.
From an operational standpoint, we hit that point in September, October of 2023, the developments that have like River Park, Cedar Woodlands 1 and 2, Riverwood Hills, because those are one-point connected, that's like 300 users that will turn on immediately so we can start collecting fees. And at the same time, the other balance of individual systems, the balance of 190, whatever, number 200, that's a time period, but the sooner we get those, everybody online, it's hard. Because what happens, we need to make that first payment, I think it's on the timeline. We need to make that first payment 12 months after we go to the first, so...
Well, and the other thing, the grinder stations come on day one, too.
And that's from '87.
And Orinoco states will come on day one. So when it happens, it'll happen quick, but then there's the people with the gravity services that won't, you know, they'll have the 12 months to make the connection. The city allowed five years to make the water connection, which I think in hindsight, many of us would agree that was probably too generous, because it did create some hardship from the utility standpoint. And, you know, I think from the utility standpoint, the sooner the better. Within this document, I do also talk about, you know, there are private costs for the abandonment of wells or septic and that piping that needs to happen, and are there programs available to help people pay for that? And, you know, there are some options that we need to explore more. Part of the problem with those funding sources is sometimes they have money and sometimes they don't. But working with SWCD, for example, in 2009, they paid for three-quarters of the cost of bad wells. That was a big deal. I mean, it was hundreds of thousands of dollars by the end of the, you know, $150,000 in grant dollars that residents received ultimately. So we've got some time to work on that. We'll provide information to people and continue to work on that and provide a lot more detailed information once we get to that point in time in 2022, 2023, or...
One other point I'd like to, for those that are on Zoom and for the council as well, you go to the city of Orinoco website, and at the top we have a community dropdown menu. In that dropdown menu, there's a wastewater project heading, and that is where you see a lot of presentations and information that's been available from 2016 all the way up to 2019. After our February 16th council meeting, we'll be putting this information out there on the website as well. So a lot of information's already out there. Feel free to look at it, and we'll continue to put information out there on the website. Anything else for Joe? Otherwise, we have one more agenda item. Did that question get answered?
It did. Yep.
So the last item is a Mike the Body, is our financial planner. There's a one-page proposal for services based on any wastewater and water improvements. It identifies what he's going to put for the city and presented at the February 16th meeting. Little more details about the cash flow, taking what Joe has presented and putting it in a little more detail, cash flow, throwing in different factors for us to look at or be aware of. And so to do that scope of service, a loan sum, it's a $5,000 charge. If he goes over that, there's an hourly charge, but I don't anticipate that. So with that, I make a motion that we approve his associate, David Dunn Associates, to approve his proposal for service.
Second.
And this, these services, the $5,000 are, that will all be, it's planned to be all reimbursable through the PFA. It's part of our funding under the acquisitions, and so we'll be being reimbursed in that as well. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. That's a true. With that, I'll entertain a motion for German. As I make the motion. All in favor, comments? Thank you, Joe, for your time. And for those that are on Zoom, thank you for attending with us. Apologize for this interruption, but we'll continue to work on our audio and video services. But thank you for your patience. At some time in the future, hopefully in near future, we'll ultimately play this presentation after the February 16th out on the website so you can include as well. And that's the end. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah. I was a little concerned about your time.